Discipline and attendance is not a kindergarten. Kind of repeating some of those important dates that we break down, of course, the February 3rd deadline. March typically is the K-day, kindergarten day. We do have some students that end up going to their, hopefully their, school of residence at that point. And we had some kids this year change their mind and, "I want to go to that school." So that was a very beneficial piece. Deadline for all applications. And then we've always said now, May 15th, well, that's what I was told, May 15th is kind of the expected date for that decision. We actually did that at the board meeting on the 28th for those transfers that had come in at that point for this coming school year. I know you can't see that online, but hopefully you've seen that in the past. That is our transfer paperwork that talks about the fees and the process through that. You can view that online if you're a parent. You can go to any single school in our county and receive that as well. Got some spreadsheets that I did for you, and of course you have a week or so to look at those. With kindergarten transfers for 2014, we had 219 thus far that have made or requested a transfer. I do want to draw your attention to the Attic County transfer down at the bottom, 17 of those. I think that's a nice piece to bring to your attention there. Of course, we have some schools that are gaining students in this process, and we have some schools that are losing in this process. I did a little research from Dr. Fisher's past. These numbers are pretty customary to the past in terms of the number of transfers. This next piece looks at just elementary, this is K-6. I want to let you know these numbers, we did pull out of here the students that have already had a past transfer. For example, if somebody was changing schools that we forced to do a transfer to, you guys have already approved that one time. We didn't want to mumble those numbers up for you with that. So these are more first-time transfers that you're looking at in this process. Looking at 147 there in the elementary range. And again, we've talked about this before. The majority of these transfers are somebody that's living, for example, myself in the Foston district, and I moved to, you know, the Union district and I want to remain at Foston. That is typically the majority of our transfers in there. We've got things like transportation and daycare issues. Those are the majority of our transfers that we're addressing in this range. Secondary transfers, again, we have those two in front. And then there's nothing different in this piece. The majority of those transfers are students that are at Shelby High School, that want to stay at Shelby High School, or at Crest High School, or Burns High School, and they want to finish out their career at those zones. So the majority of those people are asking, are that range there? Some results, transfers that were turned in prior to April 3rd, you know, a little over 450. After April 3rd, 293. Now, I will be very honest with you, probably that next week or so, right after that deadline, we had still a lot come in. Of course, they got it in on time, they said it was in the mailbag or that kind of thing. So, you know, some of that 293 went to that first time. Of those, none of those transfers were enough. I did put a note down at the bottom down there for you. We are down a little bit with kindergarten students. Last year we had 1175, this year 1128. Want to move to our athletic piece. I guess I'll take my hat slightly, athletic piece, and talk about the 365-day transfer policy from the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. I'm going to read a lot of this word for word, but then I'll elaborate a little bit. It says, "High School Athletic Association Transfer Policy is after initial entry into ninth grade and absent a bona fide move." So a change of residence is not a transfer. Okay? If I live at my house and I move to Kings Mountain, that is a bona fide change of residence. That is not a transfer. If I don't have those two things, then I'm looking at the next two, A and B. Student transfer from one member of school to another member of school within the same LEA must sit out 365 days. The second part of that sentence is important. The LEA may create criteria for immediate athletic eligibility for transfers within the LEA. Our next slide will explain a little bit about that process that we do in Cleveland County Schools at this point. B, a student transfer from one member of school to a, in one LEA, to another member of school in a different LEA must sit out 365 days. Exceptions for that eligibility for one LEA to another, they have to go to a transfer committee as well at the state level. For example, if I transfer from Rutherford County to Cleveland County, we can approve that, but they still have to go to the waiver process from the High School Athletic Association. Let's look in our handbook. Each of you had a copy of your report. This is just a, basically a copy of a certain section. And really, if it looks, I think it's bullet two. When a student changes school, they must obtain a board-approved education transfer to become immediately eligible and not sit out 365 days. When you go through our handbook, in our athletic handbook, it is in there three or four times of the policies that have been in place for several years now. So basically, those are the process, those are the waiver processes to sit out 365 days. Now, some of you have asked for different options in that process. We'd like to share a couple with you for your discussion tonight. When a student transfers is initiated upon entry of ninth grade year and beyond, okay? There are some of the options. We can keep it as it is, present. If you meet the board-approved transfer criteria, the athlete is immediately eligible. That is what we have in place right now. If we do a board-approved transfer, any student that transfers is eligible to participate in athletics. We could implement a 365-day rule for all high school athletes that have a board-approved transfer with no exceptions. Basically, if you transferred your 10th grade year, you guys would grant that transfer, and that student sits out 365 days, no matter what it is, okay? Options are bullet three. You can implement a 365-day rule for all, for all high school athletes that have a board-approved transfer with the option of a committee to review that transfer to become immediately eligible. That is what several of our counties are probably going around us. Gaston County has that review committee as well. They implement some criteria to look at that review committee, and then they make that recommendation to the board. And then lastly, we could implement a 365-day rule for all high school athletes that has a board-approved transfer with the option of requesting the board hearing become immediately to you for that year to be eligible. And of course, we're very smart, a whole lot smarter than that. There's other options that you may think of that I have not. Several of you have called this week and asked some questions, and hopefully I've answered that. But at this time, Dr. Fisher, I guess I'll turn it over to you and the board, Mr. Parker Hammer, for discussion.
I'm sure some have questions for Brian and also comments. I'll keep a record of who's speaking, so if somebody makes, hopefully get around all the way around before we come back to the spot. Yes, sir, Mr. Blaine.
I like the idea of that committee from all the way around that you had there. But would that committee be selected from all four, I guess, our districts? Shelby, Kings Mountain, Burns, not just all in one section?
I think that recommendation would come from you guys. I think that criteria would come from you guys. Is that correct, Dr. Blaine?
I think the answer to this blank question, I would, when I was in degree, if that's the direction that we chose to move, and we had a committee to review those, that committee would be representative of our, of our community. Meaning that we would have a representation from all attendance zones.
In other words, Tuesday, Burns Tuesday, Gray House Tuesday, Shelby Tuesday.
It may look like, yes, it looks something like that, you know, but it would be a committee representative of our, of our community, yes.
Not just, just the community. I wanted, I would, I'd want to, I'd like to say that it, we made sure that it had to be somebody from each school district on that committee.
I think if you put a committee together, you'd, you'd want to be sure that was, that was taken care of.
Any other questions, Thomas?
Because my question would be about the committee too. And I understand y'all keep saying that it would be up to us, that we look to you for guidance, but that would be a combination of school personnel and just laypeople out of the community, and some board members, or what are your thoughts on, on a committee?
I think if we want our thoughts, and we keep coming back to.
Well, let me interject one more, Dr. Hammer, on what a board member on that committee would be. I would, the call is to put a board member on that committee, we call it, the committee turned one down, and then it came for an appeal, and the appeal would come to the board. But I do think that Bush Blanton would, that Bush Blanton said we would want all four attendance zones represented in the committee, and we would want to make sure that, my thoughts would be that the policy would be appropriate to the board and explain how that committee could be selected, and who members of that committee would be.
And would that committee change every year?
It could, it could be outstanding, maybe as personal changes, obviously, that'd be some problems there. But that may be something that we get to committee, consistently, for over a week to a half.
Dr. Fisher, Mel, I've read a little bit on the committee yet.
Let Don give a little kind of background.
Sure.
Well, you can go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna go ahead with the, I like the last bullet out, actually. When we look at, I do like the idea of the committee, but if we're looking at the idea of oversight, and I've talked to a couple board members, I feel like, you know, we're the ones, you know, gonna ultimately approve these or whatever. The hearing can come before us. We could listen to the particular cases, and it gives us more oversight. Now, that's a lot more work, I am aware of that, but, I mean, if we're gonna take it out of the hands of the current system we have, I'd, I'd like to put it back in our hands so that we can ultimately have the decision. This is my opinion.
Well, I meant for that to happen. In other words, even when that committee came up for that recommendation, that it had to come to our hands for us to find and approve.
How many people are we talking about?
You mean on committee or students?
No, how many hearings are we looking at? I think that's a big question. Are we looking at 10, are we looking at 50, or are we looking at 100?
How many transfers do we have?
What you have here in front of you, that report, is 101 transfers that happened in the secondary system. Obviously, some of those would not be athletics. But, I really couldn't tell you in the process how many of that could be. Some of the simple things, I think, Dr. Fisher was looking at in terms of the committee, some of those that could be possibly, I guess, weeded out. When you look at the criteria for a committee, you may set the standards for that. For example, let's see, there's a sibling in that school, or a school employee, or a previous transfer, or remaining. You know, some of those parameters that you can make that would help eliminate some of those things to narrow that field down that are pretty easy to say, this is why that is. Those are some things that you can put forth for that committee, that's just an option. Maybe social services is assigned to that, and we need to move.
So, let me just make sure I understand. Because I know that, that our criteria is that if an employee, employees allow to let their children go in whichever zone they want. So are we saying that if an employee has a child that plays a sport, and so we automatically allow that transfer because it's an employee's child, would they automatically be allowed to play immediately because they're an employee's child? Or do they, do we revert back to?
Under the present system, that child's.
That takes place, right.
Under the future system, that's your call. If it is the future system, excuse me.
Yes, sir. Dr. Hammer, I don't, I understand ultimately, it rests with us in terms of what action, what alternative, and what decide. I'm just curious that with some of the other counties we have similar procedures, what, what, what system or format are they getting?
The two that I've been able to contact this week, Rutherford County, I have that policy, and their committee looks at, for the athletic director, their committee to look at, mental health-related, social service support order, student protection, students of employees and siblings. Those are the ones that that committee will set to verify those, and they pass on. And they may, you know, those are the ones that they approve, I guess, in looking at that. Other ones, you know, that may go to the board or whatever. In Lincoln County, the superintendent assigns students to zones, or if they feel like there's a waiver, the superintendent assigns students to zones. For example, a bullying issue. If it's Ms. Miller, I'm gonna assign Ms. Miller to East Lincoln Middle School, and that student is automatically eligible. So that person is kind of the hearing person, if that is, and then they're automatically eligible when the superintendent assigns them. Rutherford County has not returned my call after approval. They don't have an athletic director in Rutherford County, that is a fact. So of the people that I was speaking to and some other folks around, it seems like there's a committee to screen and then the board to appeal, but there is both ways. Does that answer your question, sir?
One, one quick question. The definition of high school athletics, are we talking about the cheerleader? Are we talking about?
This is going to be dangerous, Mr. Glover. We're in the High School Athletic Association, cheerleading is not a sport.
So we're using their definition?
Correct.
Ryan, I have a couple of questions. Jerry, did you want to add something? I don't want to. I think that we, the board already has the oversight in this with, after you all make through recommendation, and there is an appeal. Is that, there is the option of an appeal if there is a transfer requested that you do not approve. Is that correct? So you already have the mechanism for that. I personally am not sure we need two oversight committees, since essentially, there's already one, maybe not a committee in name, but there's already a decision made. I'm confused a little bit about the timetable on Attic County. I know we don't have that very often, but you said we could approve it, but it has to go to NCHSA for an opinion or for a decision. Is that the ruling decision there, or, in other words, it really doesn't matter what we say?
No, sir.
It provides no impact on the decision?
We have to provide the transfer. If we provide the transfer to the student from Rutherford County to Kings Mountain High School, or, or Gaston to Kings Mountain High School, we would approve that child to come in and participate academically. If they want to participate athletically, since it's in Attic County to, you know, to our county, they do have to request a waiver to the High School Athletic Association. And that is a two-week, two-month process, depending on their turnaround.
Since I know there are many other schools, but it seems to be, maybe most of the complaints coming regarding football, can you tell us what the, for X number of years, how many transfers we've had on the four zones, four high school zones?
I can do, I can do varsity football. That was something that we looked at about a week or so ago. And this is for varsity only. I'm gonna give you two columns of that. Crest High School has nine transfers on their varsity team. Shelby has 10. Kings Mountain has two. Burns has three. Now, let me clarify that. Ron Hull lives in the Kings Mountain zone, but has gone to Washington, to Burnsville, Burns High School. Those kids could be in there. So that number could be kids that have been there entire career. I did look in the last couple of years, I went back two years. Crest High School has two transfers within the last two years. Shelby, two new transfers, excuse me.
These are transfers in two?
In two, two new transfers.
From Crest High School in our association, right?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Two at, two at Crest, one at Shelby, one at Burns. And the two at Crest, one of those was an employee's child. So, and the old criteria is 1-1-1, Kings Mountain had zero. So at that point, we're really, in the last two years, we're talking four students in.
That's out of the district, right?
No, no, sir, that's from Kings Mountain, Shelby, Shelby, yes. Yeah, so we're talking a, now, again, that's in the last two years. So like, you know, some of these kids have been in Shelby's schools their entire career. That's where you're getting that 10 point. But within the last two years, it's a smaller amount. So that's, that's something to consider when you look at the committee. You know, if that student's been in the Burns district for their entire career, are we gonna continue to let that kid go off route? I would think your policy has been the same condition, but that's up to you, Mr. Blaine.
All right. Say, well, Roger, do you have anything? I saved myself the last intentional one. I think where there's smoke, there's fire. I've talked to many people. I've talked to athletic directors, I've talked to principals, I've talked to people that are here. This is a subject that I did not explicitly put on this agenda tonight, I'm gonna make sure, but it has sparked some interest with me. I feel that we've got to put our foot down, we gotta put it down hard. We cannot allow this to continue for long. I do not think this is a problem that happened within the last six months, though. I think this is something that has happened in several years, many years, you know, maybe five or six, but... From, from my standpoint, I think as a board member, first and foremost, I think that it's something that should be very easily done. On our transfer report, I want to say two columns. I started with one, but now I want two. I'd like a column at the end of each student's name from 7th grade through 12th grade. Simply, are you participating in athletics or are you not? Yes or no? And then I want to know in that last column, what sport are you playing in? And I want to know that for me. When I go to vote on that student transfer request, I want to report, I want to know if there's students that are participating athletically. If, you know, I realize that our, Dr. Hull and his staff, it's hard, I think, to oversee the number of transfers that he hits. If a student answers no, he may have no idea that that student maybe is gonna be a star basketball player or baseball player, and he, and that student has answered no. If we come back, I think we should add a portion of our policy that says, if they answer no, and it turns out that they decided they want to play baseball, and we pull it, then that would automatically give them a 365-day suspension because that violated our policy. We said we approved them, and they said they didn't play a sport, and they decided they were going to. I think that should eliminate them immediately. I believe that once a student enters ninth grade, the North Carolina High School Athletic Association put this rule in place for some reason. Maybe I don't know what it is, but I've done some research on it, and I think it was put in place for a reason. I think the Cleveland County schools should do the same. I think if we start school in ninth grade, and they play ninth grade and 10th grade football, and they all of a sudden come up here in 11th grade, and they decide they want to transfer for athletics, then they should be ineligible unless they come before this vote. And there's not that big a, there's not gonna be 101 of those, do you believe that? There's not gonna be 101. There's gonna be very few. I, I think that this is a problem in our community, and that we have to look at.
Thank you. Anybody else? I have another, is there any, we have all of these hearings, Eric, man. Is there any student information confidentiality that might be jeopardized?
Not to my knowledge. Dr. Fisher, do you? Not to my knowledge. How's Athletic Association's asking for? I would think we're moving this way.
I've got one more question. I had a parent call me, and this was on academics, not, not an athlete. But come to find out, after they transferred, they decided to play hockey. But the main reason at first was due to academic, to the academics in them, okay? That goes back to sort of what Ms. Foles is saying, you know, about, here they, they went for academics at such and such school, and they say that that school is better than any other school, and then all of a sudden, they changed, and they went to play baseball, football, and, Mr. Glover, you know about the cheerleaders, okay? Those cheerleaders, they might not be classified as a sport, but they sure are out there jumping, lifting, down at that football game and that basketball game, reeling them on, and I don't know that we're funding enough money that that football squad and that basketball squad should be having them cheerleaders out on their money instead of it coming out of parents' pocket.
Please don't.
That's another issue.
Yeah.
Please don't want to get into that.
Okay.
I think including the cheerleaders in this would be, when the committee happens.
Well, there's a cheerleader got ruled out of giving them.
I don't think that we're against, I'm just telling you what the High School Athletic Association.
Okay, but if cheerleaders, if a cheerleader got ruled out of that 300, on that 365-day rule, if I'm not mistaken, this year.
Mr. Blaine, in your scenario with her recommendation, if she is saying that that child sits out 365 days, and in the middle of the school year, that child would decide to participate in sports under her recommendation, and your question, that child would have to come to a waiver hearing to participate. If not, they sit out the 365 days participating, okay?
But that comes from my account, yeah?
Not under her recommendation.
Oh, no.
She is saying that she'd like people to sit out 365, she wants to wait.
And request, yes, and request a break. I'm not saying that I wouldn't make them eligible, I'm just saying that, from your standpoint, that you approved your transfer, and I think that also, what I'm saying is that I hope that the superintendent's office will be strongly say, you know, if we approve this, you are not eligible for 365 days unless you go to the, and we can't guarantee that that will be... And hopefully, that will deter some of these folks transferring out, just by putting your foot down and being stricter from that standpoint. That's, that's just my, my call.
Yes, I would wish for that, yes.
Let me just say this, you know, one of the things I think that's, the reason this has come up, you know, I think we need to look, first of all, we have got an extremely strong athletic program. Our football program, when you look at the conference, they're all at the top of the conference. Cleveland County schools are all doing great. We're looking at, according to this report, we're looking at four kids that have transferred in the last two years.
Varsity football.
On the, on the varsity football league. So we may have a small problem. We probably don't have a huge problem. We don't need to make a huge move to worry about the four kids. If you said one of these was employee kids, that drops it down to three, we continue that detection, which I think we probably should. So we're looking at three kids. The, the big gorilla, the root that we're not approaching is the fact that most people talk about one of the transfers is not listed because the person supposedly is living in another residence, and that's something that we're always going to have. Because if you have money enough to rent a house or buy a house in another district, you can have your kid sub, bona fide, legally change residence. That's not going to be addressed in this policy because we can't address it because legally they just have to the rules. So regardless of what we do, we're not gonna totally make everybody happy. And we need to look back, these three varsity kids and probably 20 or 30 other kids that are playing in the county, and let's look at it, let's do what we need to do, but let's not forget that, no matter what we do, we're not gonna solve that problem. People get around, you've got the money, you can get around the rule. And that's the way it's been forever, and if we're going to continue to do that way. There are ways to get around any policy, and there are people that are gonna find a way. And this is not gonna stop people finding that way to get around by moving their legal residence. They're gonna begin to do that. So this is not gonna be a cure-all, no matter what we do. But I think, you know, we may need to, I think, you know, looking at a policy like this, but also don't want to get the board involved in 20 or 30 appeals every year. I think we need to have a committee that's gonna, if we're gonna look at, if we're gonna have 20 or 30, probably don't need the board. We probably need to sit back and have a committee rather than being directly involved in the, in the actual decision.
I was just gonna say, I mean, Mr. Old took a lot of what I was gonna say. The huge problem is just not supported by that. You know, when it boils down to it, when we got four students and one is an employee's child, that's not a huge problem in my book. I mean, I just don't, I mean, I see, I hear a lot in the community, a lot of misinformation. I mean, I just don't, I mean, I see, I hear a lot in the community, a lot of misinformation, a lot of information. People can make up stuff all day, every day, but that doesn't, that doesn't match the facts. Facts say that over the last two years in varsity football, where a lot of noise is coming from, we've had essentially one child, three of our high schools transferred. Is that right? I mean, one at Crest, two at Crest, one's employee's child, one at Shelby, one at Burns, nine at Kings Mountain. That's not a big problem in my book. And I think, um, it's important for us to look at. Now, if we were to make a move, um, I guess the, the noise is, how's the board overseeing this? If we were to make a move, I'd be all about hearing those individually, but if there's not a huge problem in place, I just don't see the need to make a change. And I don't wanna imply that anybody's doing anything illegal when the facts say otherwise. You know, I, I just think it's important to, to keep things in place that seem like they're working.
Richard, just simply, uh, Mr. Chair, I would just differ with Mr. Hall's saying and, uh, with Mr. Thurman saying. I, I don't see it as a major problem. I do see a lot of misinformation, miscommunication that's going on, perception, some seem to be driving it. And, uh, and something that Mr. Hall said that, that's, that's really precipitating this discussion and that's that elephant in the room. If we wanna be honest about it. And it's getting out there on both sides, misinformation, misinformation. And, uh, and I'm not sure I'm in favor of any dramatic changes to our procedures and policies and practices at this point, so that's just not coming.
Anybody else?
Yes. We're talking about two new ones here and zero there, and one here and one there. We're still missing that Crest has nine transfers on their football team. Shelby has ten. Kings Mountain has two and Burns has three. There is a problem.
And, and guys, I hope those numbers are, they're pretty close, I mean, you may be.
Anybody else? I wanna say one last thing. I'm not in favor of anything. I'm gonna classify our athletes in two areas. Student athlete and then athlete student. And athlete student, in my mind, is the one that we want to prevent. Now, we cannot penalize the student athlete, whether they play tiddlywinks or whether they play football. If they're bona fide student, quote, first, so whatever we decide to have. We answered your question?
Well, I don't think we have.
I don't think we have.
If I, if I can kind of, if I can kind of sum it up.
I, I still have lots of questions, so.
If I, if I, let me, if I sum it up and then maybe we, we can, we can do this.
We're already past the time.
I, I think, you know, if you talk to the media, there have been some concerns about the 365-day, uh, period. And, and that's something that is, um, you know, been talked about and, and everything. I do see a way that this process works effectively and efficiently if we decide to do the 365. Because I think at the end, when we go through a good, effective and efficient process, we're gonna come down to a small number of hearings that you, Dr. Hammer, may be athlete students or may be transferred because of, of, of athletics. And in the past, we tried to go through, and if you, if you remember, we set through a period where we transferred for the night because we felt like that student was transferring because of athletics, we would not have transferred. But that is very difficult sometimes to, 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 to know. So if, if we decided to, and the reason we're talking about this today, because there has been some chatter and we do a, a little bit of direction from the board so we can bring you back to propose a policy because this would change our board policy, uh, and it would change our athletic procedures, it would change our board policy if we decided to go to a 365-day, uh, eligibility period, so to speak. Then, then I think we would need a, a system to, uh, because there are student athletes that transfer for a variety of reasons. It may be that the student has gone to, uh, Bradham Elementary, Shelby Intermediate, Shelby Middle, and attended Shelby High School and because of financial reasons, abandoned, lost their home and they had to move. And so in, in the past, we've not made that child, uh, move schools. And so we would wanna keep that transfer there to that school. But also there may be a homelessness issue, the child is forced to move and because of, of their, their, their finances, they can't get transportation to Shelby High School, so they need to go to Crest High School, they write books. And that student did transfer because of athletics, they transferred because they needed to write books. And so that transferred child, in my opinion, should be able to play athletics because there's a, there's a reason for their move homelessness. So, so I, if we decided to move towards a 365, my, my thought would be to have a committee. And that committee would, would be consisted of our athletic directors and then represented from all four attendance zones. But that committee look at a set criteria to, to whether, to conclude whether that child would be eligible. It would not be a, a haphazard, uh, you know, something you wrote down, that type of thing. We'd have a set set of criteria, such as, did the student attend the feeder zone the two previous semesters? Meaning, if they went to Shelby Middle School the two previous semesters, they wanna transfer to Shelby High School, they would be eligible. Did they, did they transfer to remain in their current attendance zone? They would be eligible. Is it not a picking decision? They would be eligible. Uh, special programs, special social services or DJJ or something like that that placed them somewhere, they would be eligible. Uh, homelessness, they would be eligible. If we changed our policy, we would need to include something for unsafe schools, they would be eligible. So we would have a criteria for our committee to look and say, okay, this child met this criteria, bingo, they're eligible. If they did not meet any of that set criteria, then they would be ineligible. Because they, all the criteria that they had, they, they were ineligible. So those students then would, would be eligible for 365 unless they wanted to appeal that decision. That appeal, that decision, that appeal decision would come to the board. It's my belief that that number would be relatively small. Uh, most of the students that transferred, uh, you know, and I'm trying, I mean, to, to, to interpret your work, but I think you're correct me wrong, of the ten transfers to Crest High School, eight of them would have been made eligible because they attended the two previous semesters in their feeder zone. That means they went to Crest Middle School. So many of those students went to Bulling Springs Elementary, or Springmore, County Three, they went to Crest Middle, they're trying to apply, transferred to Crest High School, they would be eligible. And plus, they would not really meet the High School Athletic Association criteria that says, once entered the ninth grade, if they change schools. See, that's an important caveat that sometimes we, we skip over there a little bit, is, 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 is the eligibility upon entering the ninth grade. Uh, if we did something like this, and I've tried to take different input from, from the board members and scratch out some notes here, if we did something like this, I think that we could, um, maintain a sense of, of effective, efficient operation. We would not, you know, overburden or overwork our schools or our staff, but also we provide the board some oversight. We could give the board a report to say, okay, we made these thirty child, children eligible and here are the reasons why children were given eligibility. You can see we had twelve that were called in the previous semester, we had five because they transferred into current zone. We had, you know, whatever the criteria were, we would, we would work with legal counsel to making sure we were, uh, defendable in those criteria. And then those that didn't meet any of the criteria, if they didn't wanna play sports, like Ms. Falls said, they wouldn't, there wouldn't be any. We would have some of those that didn't wanna play sports. But if they, they decided at some point, you know, I didn't meet any of those criteria, but I wanna play sports, so then I would have to set up an appeal here to, to, to get out of my 365. That, just to throw that out there as a comfort, not necessarily compromise the, the strategy of how we can implement, you know, 365, board oversight, but at the same time, not throwing away the system that we've got that's working, you know, for the most part, well, but there always are a couple of situations that probably shouldn't. That would have to come to you as a policy recommendation, because we're looking for more guidance of, of what, what the board wants to say in, in our committee policy. Mr. Hall, any other questions?
I, I think my questions are more on the nitpicky side, the what ifs, you know, and maybe that comes after a policy recommendation because I keep thinking, right now, our transfer policy is, I mean, just for anybody, everybody, whether they're athlete, non-athlete, as long as there's, I mean, what we've told you, then, then you, is that if there's room in that grade level, if there's room in that class, then, then it's okay, whether they're an employee's child or not, they, they, they can transfer. And so pretty much it's a fair playing field for all those students. When you add the, the question of do you play athletics, that skews it some for those children. Um, except for our employees' children. They're still automatically, not in the way we look at it now, they're still automatically eligible to play. So that's what I'm hearing, right? That.
Any transfer?
Any, any transfer. And so then the playing field is not level for the employee's child who is an athlete versus just, you know, for example, my child, you know, if, if one of them had been an athlete. So I guess that's where I have a little, little bit of a problem that the, and, and I'm not opposed to our employees getting those, I mean, it's a perk, we've always said that, to be able to allow the child to go to the school that they want to go to. But our non-employee children who are athletes don't get that same opportunity and I don't wanna keep going on if I've made sense already. I, I, like I said, my, my questions are more the, the what ifs, you know, and I will never answer all of those, but to me, that's a big one, that our regular transfer policy is fair, I think, but when it comes to, if we make this drastic change, it's gonna be drastically unfair to children whose parents are non-employees, in my opinion. So, but I'm not saying, I don't wanna make a change, it's just, that's just a question, that how, how will we handle that?
And I think that, that's one of the reasons why I did not include my list of non-employee children, because I'm gonna be that. That they would need to accept these criteria. Most of our children that transferred from high school, high school have been attended a feeder zone, a school, two previous semesters. Most, I would say ninety percent of them, they, 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 they would be eligible. And so that would, we would give them all, a strong percentage of ours would have committed, would, would give, would give a check and approval on that standard, whether they were employee's children or non-employee's children. But the, the ones that, that went to Shelby Middle, that wanted to go to Burns High, those are the ones that we would have to look a little deeper and say, why are you trying to change the attendance zones? Is it all the bad ways, is it all the bad ways? That would be, I think that, that addresses some of the concerns that there is, is there that, there may be lots of other ways, you know, but that would be.
Well, it'd be unreasonable to say, since already almost fifteen minutes into supper, would it be reasonable to say that at the next work session, we'll complete this or do you wanna come back to us with a recommendation? I, I don't have, I, I think I see it as a by and a, you all correct me if I'm wrong.
I like his idea on, on the committee. Um, I like that idea.
I can support the idea of, of committee. We're already doing that in a small measure. Whenever schools develop an eligibility list, it used to be the High School Athletic Association rules, and I guess it still is, you had to share that eligibility list with everybody else in your conference. So we're already publishing that, at least within a conference, a, a committee, you know, to look over and see what the schools have. You know, we're just looking at it right now from thirty thousand feet, but the concept, I think, is same. And in addition to that, whether we do that or whether we don't, I do like Mr. Falls' idea of having a list, a column out there that lists athletics. We've already got it on the forum, where they told us whether they wanna participate in athletics or not. So it doesn't take any extra digging on the part of the staff, all they gotta do is just take whatever answers there and at least give us that decent question. I think that sounded nice as well.
If it's okay with the board, then I would, I'll bring back, we'll, I'll work over the next couple of weeks or a week or so to try to bring a draft policy to our next meeting. Because this is a little time sensitive in that our transfer period begins February. So we need to have something in place, so those students, students that are transferring. Obviously, if I apply for a transfer and I get accepted, then I realize, oh, you know, I may, it may impact me, but I don't have to accept that. You know, I, I could always say, we have students every year that get a transfer to Kings Mountain High School or Crest High School, wherever, and say, ah, you know, take a thought, I'm gonna stay at my home school. And we have a lot of those. So, um, but, but they would have that option, but we do need to, when we, when we send that transfer home, form home, we would also wanna attach a memo that explains our policies with, with the board permission, we would bring some, some samples for our next meeting. We would have to adopt, obviously, it was definitely a first read, we would adopt in, in December, January, in time for that.
I'll make this quick. Uh, I know of one, uh, one child, he transferred from Shelby High School to Crest High School and he strictly took vocational. Well, he got over there, he didn't get vocational, but, uh, in other words, what he wanted to go to school for, he got put somewhere else. He's not even getting to do, uh, what he actually transferred for, they said, because that particular thing was strictly freshman and he was in the tenth grade. And, uh, he said, well, I guess I just, well, stay in Shelby. And might be worth that, take semester or something else like that. So, uh, maybe we, only transfers that we need to make sure that what a person's going for, because that was gonna be his field in career. That's the reason he wanted to go to Crest High School and he's not even getting to do his field in career.
Thank you. Supposed to be through in fifteen minutes, he has to make it twenty minutes, let's make that.